...to order, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to mention that Craig Paddy is absent this evening and his absence is excused. So now we'll move to the approval of the agenda.
And have we approved the agenda?
All right, thank you. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. And we are at public comments on agenda items. I don't have anybody that's signed up to comment and there will be another opportunity at the end of the meeting unless you'd like to add something right now that you want us to address. Okay. Student board member comments, start there.
Okay, so I am the president of DECA and we are going to an area competition in January and we're very excited about that. We've been preparing for a while now. It's a business and marketing program so it helps prepare the kids for their future and it helps market ourselves in a professional manner. We also did Giving Tree volunteering recently, which was really fun and it really was very eye-opening.
Thank you. I moved student board members in front of board members because I think she's more important than we are.
Well, let's agree.
Absolutely.
Shrewd judgment.
Okay, so let's go to board member comments. Leanna, do you have anything? Sorry, I'll skip. Let's just go to Art.
Okay. Not a whole lot to report other than the three of us did go with Dana to the joint board meeting of the ESD 113, is that right?
Yeah, Olympia area.
The Olympia area groups. And that was interesting for me because these are board people that we don't see as often as some of the other ones and that we don't hear about as much. But also Chris Rakedall, the superintendent of public instruction was there and we had some group discussions of this and that and you know, I had, actually Dana had a great question to ask, which I was too chicken to bring it publicly because I was the spokesman, but I did bring it to the moderator in writing afterwards, which was having to do with equity. My personal question, which I was too chicken to bring up, was what kind of influence does the superintendent of public instruction really have? And he actually, he brought, he answered that without it being asked of him because of the way he described what he does. That's what I was looking to try to find out. And so that was worthwhile for me to understand what the superintendent of public instruction can do and what kind of influence he has. It's not quite what I exactly thought, although it fits with our government, you know, governmental models and stuff like that. Nevertheless, that was that. Then the other parts in working in the school, I do have to brag about my Builders Club kids.
All right.
They had an event in which they came right here and matter of fact, the officers always like to sit right up here, plus some other kids to make them feel more important. But they came up here and we had out there making placemats for senior citizens for the holidays. And we were charged with more to make more than we've ever had to make before when we've done this. We've always made seventy-five, eighty, ninety, that kind of stuff, but this time we were asked to make a hundred and thirty. Well, I had more than, I had a hundred and fifty-plus placemats. The kids made every single one of them. I think a hundred and fifty-two or a hundred and fifty-seven or whatever it was, but they made every single one of them. I was very proud of them. There were twenty-three kids, eight co-annus members plus the superintendent and Tom Warland, also a co-annus member, came in, dropped in just briefly to see what's going on. So it was well attended and there was also a forty-year-old girl. So she's a future Builders Club member.
Sure.
Anyway, that, so I just have to brag about that. It was really fun and our kids did a great job as they always do on that. That's enough.
And it was good to read your report on it, too. Well, I've had lots of little odds and ends. A couple of weeks ago, I attended a round table at, in the high school and I was very pleased to learn that there are kids that are very interested in learning more about U.S. government and Constitution. Another way of saying that, they didn't think they could pass a citizenship test, which gave me a little idea in the back of my mind. Anyway, later, a week later, I went to a We the People contest at Bellarmina Academy. We the People takes a look at U.S. history from a Constitution point of view. Yes, the kids were sharp. Give me the right curriculum and I think our kids could meet them. And so I kind of have a, an idea that I will discuss later. I went to the round, the, we had another round table, so I've been to two round tables. One at the middle school, which was also very informative. And I was with Art and Leanne and Laura, no, yes, at the district meeting we had. And I was able to check some of my ideas out with the superintendent. So the basic thought I have is next time the social study curriculum comes around, we don't have a test for social studies. We do for math, but there's no one test. Wouldn't it be interesting if that were a citizenship test? It just occurred to me. Oh, yes. Anyway, Tuesday I was at the Mason Transit Authority and I can report that the park-and-ride is coming along well and groundbreaking for that should be in a few months. And later this, early, let's see, yesterday, I was on a committee that heard an appeal from a parent.
Okay, thanks, John. Were you ready?
I'm so ready. So I have, we haven't had a meeting since the WASTA conference, right?
Correct.
So that was, that was really, really cool. I'm trying to remember what the, the theme, it was connecting?
Equity.
Equity and, but the, the words were like connecting?
Yeah, I don't really.
I forgot, yeah. But it was, it was really good and everyone, every one of the conferences that we get to go to, I think for me, each one, I learn more and more, but not just, even if they're exactly the same, you learn which, which ones to go to, which breakout sessions to go to and how to kind of create the best outcome from it. So this time I felt really good about it and people to look for, you know who to look for when you, you meet people and it's really a lot of eye-opening things. But the round table that we went to over here, that, I think one of the things that I took that I want to teach my son more is I think that kids are a little fuzzy on what defend yourself means. So I think that's a big thing that we're, we're teaching in our house because the first thing is maybe physical instead of mental or turn around and walk away, that's a defense, you know? So it was, it was a good question to come up and I think that would be a, you know, that, I'm sure that's what we're hitting on from here out, social, emotional and all that. So I think that was the other thing I went to and, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Well, I have been busy following all of the different events this season. I went to the high school orchestra, which only has five students in it, but it was excellent and I'm really excited about that program and hoping that it's going to be able to expand next year because we do have forty-two middle school students in the string orchestra there, learning how to play their violins, their cellos, their bass, all of those instruments. And one student yesterday at the student round table, which I'm really proud of those kids, they brought forward some very interesting topics. She was wondering why we don't have a symphony where the strings and the brass and the winds all can play together. And that's a, that's a really good question and one that I feel like we could probably explore some more. And of course, it all has to do with someone to teach the class and what are we going to give up if we have to pay for that? And there's all of those issues. But I was impressed with that group of middle school students. I thought they had good questions, they were well-prepared and they, they behaved in a very appropriate manner. So it was pretty awesome. I also went to the high school student round table this month and another group of really awesome kids, all from everywhere, not just the high risers or the leadership kids, they were from all areas from the high school and they had some great questions, too, and some really good suggestions. Were you there, Aleah?
No.
I don't remember you being, okay, I'm hoping you can come to the next one. Then I also attended a Boy Scout troop meeting with their parents and I was, they asked me to speak about citizenship.
All right.
And their parents wanted a, they didn't have a lot of information about how the school district is, is run and how the whole, the layers of principals and teachers and students and support staff and how all of that works. So it was a really good opportunity to be able to talk about that and how we pay for that. I've also been involved in the levy meetings. We do have a levy coming up on February eleventh and we have a pretty good team in place with Jean Johnson and Dan King as our co-chairs and they've been doing a nice job of recruiting more people to get involved. I went to the middle school concert, too, on the seventeenth and I'm going, I had the program, but I left it at home, but I will bet you there are at least, at least two hundred kids that are involved in that program. It was the fourth and, the fifth and sixth grade band, the concert band, the string orchestra and they also have a jazz band. So it was, it was awesome. There was a little guy playing the bass guitar that was this long, he was this tall. It was really good. And anyway, if you, even if you don't have kids in school, go and go see what they're doing up there, it's really amazing. Also, I went to a community celebration of life for a longtime community member last Saturday and she, she was very active in our community and there were many, many people there that also acknowledged that for her, Lenny Griffin was her name. But there's another opportunity to talk to people about what we do in the school district because I'm always surprised that everybody doesn't know what we know. And we're so totally involved that it's important to be able to get out there and share that information as much as we can. So I would encourage you, board members, to put those activities on your linkage, if you have one, your linkage report form, so we can keep, keep track of what we're doing. Okay, we'll move on to consent agenda items. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Any discussion?
I always like to have at least a little bit of discussion, even though I don't have any problems.
Okay.
I just wanted to note, where is it? The policy four-one-two-five, use of tobacco, nicotine products and delivery devices and stuff like that. I was expecting much more. Nope, it's just the changes, the age, age twenty-one and that's very appropriate.
Okay.
Otherwise, I have no other comments.
Okay. Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, let's move on to our Sand Hill presentation with Principal Jason Swizer and Assistant Principal Amber Nygaard.
Well, thank you for having us this evening. When Dana tasked us with an opportunity to speak in front of you about Sand Hill Elementary School, we took a lot of time to mill things over, what do we want to spotlight about our school. We do honestly believe that it's a really great place. The staff and students are exceptional and we're not just being biased, I think. But so what we came to the conclusion was that we'd really like to highlight our staff, all of the people that work together. I think Sand Hill is a unique place where we all know each other, we all have each other's backs, we do whatever it takes. And this motto this year is, is my best and your best is, makes, is our best for the kids. So we have these mottos and mantras that we use and we're consistent and we communicate. And so I wanted to shed light on some of the amazing things that our staff are doing and just put them out in the public and let people know, get to know them. Okay, so we'll continue on here. So we're going to start with, in our special ed department, we have Rachel Caraway. She runs a resource room, which is a room where students come in to get some specifically designed instruction for students and she also serves as a behavioral resource in the building. She's, she's excellent. She's consistent, she's professional and she's very knowledgeable in her, in her area. Also in our sped department, we have Nanette Severs. She runs our life skills program. She works with our medically fragile students and really works hard in, in knowing how to assess our students and decide what life skills they need to be productive citizens. She's very loving, calm and fun. In fact, she just won our ugly Christmas shirt contest, so.
She was really lovely.
Nice.
But she had made it as well, so.
Amelia Diaz, she's worked for us for a long time. She's our speech language pathologist. She helps students build their communication skills in a variety of ways. She's very involved, she goes above and beyond what is in her job description. She's knowledgeable and more than just speech, her knowledge of IEPs and special education is a resource that we use often and she's, she's kind, very kind. Amanda Ballard is one of our special education para educators. She assists in our life skills classroom and like all paras, other duties as assigned is kind of her role and she accepts that and works hard at whatever role she gets. She's patient, she's kind, she's creative, she's the one we go to when we have ideas about, hey, how can we build this or what can we do? She's very thoughtful around that. Deborah Debbie Huffman works in our, works with Rachel Caraway in the resource room. She assists students in small group intervention in math and reading. She's very intelligent, very caring and artistic as well. Minnie Douglas works in our, one of our most popular rooms, number seven. She assists with our students with life skills and, and other duties as assigned. She's very warm, getting kids pick up on that. She's very determined in whatever she does and her kind spirit as well. Jilly Mauer, Jillian Mauer, we call her Jilly, assists in many capacities in our building. We've asked Jilly to do many different things and she does it with an open mind and with a professional attitude. She's very flexible, professional, she's honest, so. That's me talking about our, about our teachers. Here's one of our, our students who, who is in one of those classrooms and I did get permission to show this, so let's hear what he has to say. Hopefully the volume's up.
I last row gets a break and this Caraway helps me with my social world and she lets us do Christmas coloring.
That's just a glimpse, glimpse of some of the awesome interactions we have with kids on a daily basis. Someone hand it over to you, Amber.
Which button do I push?
Just the right one, yeah.
All right. So we're up to our kindergarten group and Ms. Amy Johnson is, she's meeting the needs of our students. She is super energetic, passionate, fun-loving. You walk in there and you know the kids are happy and they're always creating things and, but they're learning at the same time. Kristy Staubelfelt, she is really a good leader in that department. Energetic, giving, knowledgeable, she's one of the first at school, one of the last to leave, checking on everybody. She's not just knowledgeable at the students, but the community as well and caring. Jen Lynn is the department lead this year. She also meets the needs of our youngest students every day. She's very sweet and compassionate. She's an advocate and she's one of those kind of quiet advocates that she sits and listens and, and steps up and really protects the staff and the students when she feels the need to do so. Megan Bowe just finished her teaching certificate, we're super proud of her. She's a great role model for other teachers as well as the students. She's hardworking and very loving and kind as well. Rebecca Bauer, one of our newer teachers, two or three years in now.
Three, yeah, yeah, two.
She's a learner and she's always seeking opportunities to learn more about her position and the development of the, the young child. She's very, very patient and super creative as well. Mary Alexander, she's a kindergarten para and then she does other duties as assigned. So we have paras for each grade level, but then we pull them as neat, direct for other support. She pushes into support in the classes as well as pulling kiddos out for extra layers. She's very, very organized, she keeps that whole pod organized, she works hard and she's very flexible, so if we have a need, she's ready to go. And then this is Bella.
Yeah.
Does she have to say?
Click it again.
Do I?
Click it again.
Okay.
When I raise my hand, she helps me to, a star on a Christmas tree.
Did you catch that? She gets, when she raises her hand, Ms. Bowe helps her put a star on a Christmas tree.
So the question Jason was asking the students was, how does your teacher help you learn and how do you learn at Sand Hill? So that's what they're responding to.
Moving on to first grade, this is Chelsea Anderson, one of our newer teachers. She is amazingly positive, enthusiastic and coachable. We liken her to Snow White.
She is a real-life fairy princess. And she dresses as such when she gets the opportunity and the kids love that.
That's so awesome.
Rachel King, she's one of our longtime first grade teachers, an amazing professional leader and teacher gifted in that area. Rachel Buckner is new to our school and I put that this grade works collaboratively to meet the needs of her stu, of the students every day and this first grade is, is super collaborative. She is patient, kind, creative, musical, all those things. Whitney Utley is her first, is her first year at this school. We're getting to know her, but we're finding that she's a professional by just the nature of just the way she interacts with kids and other staff members. She's kind and caring. Jamie Barick, it's fun, she's a, she's a prankster. She's flexible, intentional in her actions throughout the day. Cheryl Bosch, she works as our first grade para, she works independently with students in small groups, pulling them out of classes and working on data-driven things that we decide students need to work on. Very flexible with her time, willing to do whatever and compassionate, caring. Here's another one of our first graders. What does your teacher do to help you learn?
Help me read, helps me do math.
It's a little messy, too.
Yeah.
All right, on to our second grade team, Alice Robertson. This is her second year with us. She, for the whole grade level, they provide academic, behavioral and social-emotional support to our kids every day. So they, we ask teachers to do the behavioral and social-emotional support, but the team really worked on how are we providing that in other content areas, not just the lesson and embedding it into their instructions. She's super creative, positive and very affirming to people on our staff and she's one that people seek out a little bit if they need some affirmation and she seems to sense that when somebody might need it as well. Alex Bieber, you don't have prankster up here, but she's a prankster. She's dedicated but firm and sets up boundaries in such a loving manner that the kids really attach to that. Amy Anderson, this is her first year with us and she's professional, just like Ms. Utley is, takes her job very, very seriously and she's super organized and intentional in the way that she works with the students. Janice Idy is a very calm nature for her. You walk into her class and she's always at a calm demeanor. She's a good communicator with families and staff and students to understand what's going on and very compassionate, directed towards other people. Mary Dimon also is one of our, would be alumni, I don't know. She is an alumni as well. But she's very thoughtful and not only concerned about herself and her students, but concerned about people within the building and making sure that she shows that she cares. She's intentional in her instruction, very proactive and very caring, too. And then Heidi Oldright's our second grade para. She works with the second grades in a variety of different capacities. When we talk about flexibility, she's in that manner as well. She's very loving in the way that she supports those kiddos. She's consistent in her expectation and her routines and very, very intelligent and kind of intuitive nature to her. Amy Stone just joined us this year and she is a learner and she's always seeking opportunities to learn about her role and how that works in a school environment. Very professional and wise, just, kind of just gets it. Marie Kegel is a, in the morning, a para, works specifically with a, a student, but she'll work really well with diverse students. Loving, thoughtful, she's super consistent and I'm getting to know her a little bit more. She's really funny. She's really got a good sense of humor. Katie Walter, she's a second grade para, but she also works with fourth grade or she works with fifth grade or she works wherever we need her or wherever she sees a need. She's very, very positive, she'll take on any role and she does it with enthusiasm and really a good spirit to her. And this is one of our little second grade boys.
He says.
So what do you like about Sand Hill?
He says.
How does Ms. Heidi, Ms. Katie help you learn?
I do, I see the answer, she likes it from me.
And he'll do tasks, but he has a hard time writing it, so he expresses the answer and somebody will script for him.
Okay.
That's his way of knowing that she's helping him learn.
So third grade, Debbie Owens has been with us for a couple of years now. She's, and I put for our third grade team, encouraging, inspiring, preparing our students every day to be successful members of our community. This is when students come in and start taking state assessments, so, but she always brings fun, energetic and she's very knowledgeable. She's been teaching third grade for a while and is a great resource for our other younger teachers in the building. Jessica Collins moved to third grade this year from teaching first grade. She's a professional, she takes on leadership roles and is willing to move to different, different opportunities and take on different challenges. Very compassionate with her kids. Taylor Thompson, is fun-loving, she's kind, coachable, kids love her. She has a very calming spirit about her in her classroom.
Just afraid of fish, spread that around, let's figure out how to get her.
Maria Jensen came, this is her first year here and I was, I'm so excited that she decided to come to our school from Wisconsin. She is trauma-informed, that is her, that is her lens and she's wise and loving and you walk into her classroom and you just feel the sense of belonging. Christina Shook, our third, one of our third grade paras, she's very strong, very assertive with kids and they respond well to that with her. Hardworking and along with being strong and assertive, there's a sense of caring along that goes with that. Michelle McGanny is our third and fifth grade para. She works in multiple classrooms, pushing in, pulling kids out as needed, very flexible, willing to do whatever, communicate, good communicator and passionate about what she does and working with kids. This is another one of our third grade friends, she's, she has to stay here.
What I like about Sand Hill Elementary is that our principal, Mr. Swizer, let us name Principal Cougar. His name is Chris. And how my teacher let me, how my teacher helped me learn is letting me learn by my mistakes.
Very articulate, young lady.
All right, our EL team, we're lucky to have two certified English language learning teachers this year. She serves our newcomers to the country and provides support to the limited English proficiency students. Very loyal to students in the program, super caring and she's very insightful. We can really use her as a resource anytime to support any kid that's in the EL program or just developmentally within any grade level. She has suggestions and ideas. Molly Johnson returned, we said she came home. We got her back to Sand Hill this year after she was up at Hawkins for a little bit. She serves our newcomers and our second and fourth and fifth grade EL students. She's consistent, very thoughtful and intentional while understanding where the students come from, what they can achieve here and how to help support them in that. She's very passionate about her program. Noelia Hernandez is a graduate from North Mason and has been with us for two years now. She assists in meeting the needs of our limited proficiency students. She also is a huge help in any translations that we need during the day for our families. She's very reliable, always there, had a, she's got a heart for those kids and she sees it through a different lens because she used to be one of the students in the program as well. Very flexible and do what we need her to do or what the students rather, and very caring about everybody in that building. Molly Baker, we got her in. Molly Baker, we got her in as an ELL para this year. Very humble and generous. She just really loves what she's doing and wants to learn. Right now, she's working with Kinder in fifth grades, providing supports to the students that are staying in the Gen Ed class for their language acquisition. She's a learner, wants to know what she can do and how she can do it better, and very positive, just a positive demeanor in no matter what the situation is. Lenora Rubish is one of our interventionists. She is our interventionist coordinator. She serves students who need extra layers of support in academics and behaviors, and if she's not serving them, she's meeting, matching them with the resources that they need in order to receive that support. She's very team-spirited, whatever the team needs, honest, and she has really strong leadership qualities. And Vicki Hawkins is our interventionist as well, and she does the work with our exited EL students, or those identified as Native Language or Native Americans, and there's a couple of other categories. But she monitors them and tracks them to make sure that when they do exit the program that they don't get lost in our system, that they still remain receiving supports and achieving. She's very diligent and hard-working, very passionate. Hardly any conversation goes by that she's not cheering up because she cares so much about doing things so well for them. And then Tina F. Ray, she's our instructional coach. What would we do without Tina? Support to our new teachers, classroom teachers, behavior strategies, as well as assessment coordination. And assessment literacy is something she's working on to help us understand what that data is and what to do with it. She is a leader. She's very independently driven and enthusiastic about anything that she hears about and thinks that would apply and benefit our building. I don't know if you've got a separation in there, but I feel I'm talking a lot.
Then Juliet Tran, our counselor, provide, she provides social-emotional support in the classroom. She teaches lessons in the classroom. She provides data-driven small groups. We isolate students who, who need that social-emotional support and meets with them in a, in a small group setting. And then just having her available for the emotional needs of any child throughout the day, whatever they may be experiencing, she is available for them.
And staff.
And staff as well, yeah. She's very validating in how, when you talk to her, and very proactive in her, in how she moves about in the school. Oh, that was the last one. So, here's another one of our students. This one's really quiet. Is she a little shy?
She's so cute.
Yeah, I'll do some more on this one. Moving to our fourth and fifth-grade teachers, this is Jaren Butchko. He started with us a couple of years ago. In fourth grade, they work together as a team to close achievement gaps. They're really tight. They meet, they meet a lot to discuss aligning their curriculum and on a daily basis, they're meeting. He's positive. He's calm. You go in his class, it's very easygoing. Robin Evans, again, they work, this fourth-grade team is really tight. They spend a lot of time together. She's very enthusiastic in everything she does, very passionate about new ideas and willing to bring new strategies to the table and open-minded about some of the things that we ask her to do. Rick Robbers.
Everybody loves Rick.
He's boisterous. It's a good word for him. Very confident and devoted. He's just a leader in the school. He's, he's willing to support his teammates, support the kids, and speak up when he feels that there may be some injustice. Katie Schreckengoss, one of our fifth-grade teachers. With our fifth grade, we put that providing a safe, rigorous, and emotionally stable learning environment for students every day. Fifth grade really does focus on those SEL components, social-emotional second-step curriculum. She's confident in her abilities. She's caring, and she's very perceptive, reading kids and what they need. Tara Hancock, Tara worked for us in the special ed department and then moved to fifth grade a couple of years ago. Again, she provides that safe environment in her classroom. She's very compassionate, kind, honest. You enter her classroom, you can see that. Kids are well taken care of and understood. Kelly Cole is a fifth-grade teacher as well. She started with us as a para and moved through the ranks and got certified as a teacher. And so glad that she did because she's really, she's really doing a great job. She's imaginative. She advocates for her kids. And again, compassionate. We're using that adjective a lot with our teachers. Savannah Elliott, fifth-grade teacher, very educated, very resourceful, very articulate in her vocabulary and the knowledge that she has, and very focused on what she knows these kids need to do, and she focuses on that. I'll do, I'll keep going. Jennifer Vancel is, she works with our fifth-grade team. She's our LPN in the building. She assists with the, the health needs of some of our students, one in particular, but she's, she's devoted to what her job entails. Flexible with her time. I've asked her to do many things that she just does them, and very confident in her skills. And here's one of our upper-grade level students.
I like school because it's part of the teaching and music people and arts and everything. And this mother, and my people up here, by helping me and providing.
All right, I think we're on to our specialists here. Amy RC, she's our science teacher. She provides specifically-designed lessons to meet all the needs of all students. She's seeing sixth-grade levels of students, which is very diverse. She's a very curious learner, has a calm demeanor as well when you walk in and when you have conversations with her. Very determined to get the kids their exposure to the science that they need to experience and get their hands on and understand and carry with them. Nicole Funk, this is her second year with us. She's our PE teacher. She is very passionate about everything she does, not just something. She's just a very passionate person, devoted to her job, but devoted to the kids and the staff as well. She's enthusiastic. It's always what can we do? How can we do it better? And what's next? And if you had seen last year, she created our Funks Field Day with the fifth grades, that the fifth graders lead and facilitate for all of the students. And it was amazing to see those fifth graders design that whole program, and now the fourth graders that moved up are super excited to get year two under their belt. Sherry Bivens, she's our music teacher. Super creative, as you would expect a music teacher to be, but she is always not just looking for the musical component, but how can she incorporate that across content areas? Imaginative. She sees something and she makes it happen, and she's very kind and just calming for the kiddos. Gives them a safe place to be at all times. Lars Lundberg, we're super excited to have math, or not math, sorry, arts.
He was math, yeah.
He was math, yeah. But we were excited to get Lars over, and he does the afternoon for kindergarten through second-grade math program now. Why am I saying math? I've known Lars for years, and he was math. That was it. Very open-minded, resourceful. Somebody going from math to all, then he went into the classroom to come and design from the ground up an art specialist program. And very friendly. I refer to him as our gentle giant in the building. I love seeing him with the kindergartners in there with such the size difference. But that doesn't matter to the kids because he's right down there with them. Melinda Wing is our library tech. She specifically designed lessons to meet all kids as well. Very eloquent in understanding how a library should work, the importance of literature to kids. She's cheerful and always asking what she can do and has a positive word, very ambitious. She's taken on not only doing library with our students, but also teaching a technology component with them and ensuring that they're getting some exposure to technology in a proper manner on a regular basis. And when she, she came to us saying, I need to do this with the kids, so she's very ambitious on how she can make her time with them even more impactful. Charles Ray CJ, he's facilities management. Safe and clean learning environment, so students are able to learn at their optimum level. Hard-working, moving, moving, moving all of the time, very dedicated to his job and this district, and flexible on the call all the time, whenever we need him to go somewhere with that smile. Thomas is our evening custodial staff, and he's very friendly. I think he intentionally makes rounds at the end of the day to speak to students as well as the teachers before they leave the building. Very courteous and kind and considerate when they're in the class or something's going on to alter his route so that he's not interrupting what they're doing, and he's always got a smile, wanting to make sure that kids are happy and that the teachers are happy, too. Dee Evans in our front office, CFO. She works hard to complete the behind-the-scenes work needed to create a functional learning environment for all kids. Confident in her knowledge and abilities, very diligent, very detail-oriented, and very honest with us and everybody else. We didn't put this on here, but she has the biggest heart in that building, and she is just a big teddy bear and has expectations for everybody and just pulls us through and loves on us as well. Irina Bailey just got moved to office coordinator. She is funny. She's hysterical. She's very, very friendly to the kids and the staff, and she's hard-working. She has grasped that new role and just ran with it and still looking for ways to brighten the days of everybody else, too. Sharon, she has also joined our office and does some lunchroom supervision, playground supervision, health supervision. Whatever we need her to do, she's intuitive and sees a need, and she can fulfill it. Very easygoing and very friendly and easy to get along with. She fits just right in with our Sand Hill team. Kathy Ripley, every building probably has something positive to say about her. She's, provides the health services. She's our school nurse. Fully prepared to meet the needs, academic behavior, social demands of the students so that they can be in the classroom. Knowledgeable of her role and how it impacts students. She goes above and beyond. She will go with families to medical appointments. She will help them make the appointments. She has found support for some of our students that we've been trying to find for a long time, and she's very passionate about her role. He's in the egg.
Yeah, he's in the egg, sure. How does your teacher help you learn?
Um, by. By teaching me.
There we go.
And remembering when he was a kid, he got cheated.
There we go.
Okay, we move on to some of our activity assistants. Alex Lee is working with us this year. She is out there providing a safe recreational experience for all of our students out on that big old playground. She's very friendly. Kids glom onto her. She's imaginative in how she approaches things out there and consistent with her behavioral expectations for kids out on playgrounds. Jennifer Woodman as well, providing that opportunity for kids to get their wiggles out on that big playground. She's very determined to do a good job. She's curious, always asking questions about how to improve systems, which we appreciate, and very responsible. Jennifer, Jennifer Lambert, again, she's out there. That's a tough job being out there, and these, these three, last three really take on that role. She's self-motivated. A lot of times, we don't provide them with enough guidance, or there's a lot of experience, things that happen with that. You just kind of have to go with what you know. So, that's where she is self-motivated. She's reliable, and she maintains her cheerful attitude working with kids. She's really passionate about being outside, working with kids. She really enjoys that. Meg Block in our lunchroom, I put this down, that provides a well-balanced meal to our students and that their needs are met to succeed in the classroom. A lot of times, these ladies are the first contact our kids have with an adult throughout the day when they get their breakfast, and these are the ladies that have the first smile that sometimes kids see walking them to the building. She's friendly, positive, and always smiling. Tracy as well, works in food services, providing those opportunities. She's always looking to how to improve systems. Very determined, focused, and flexible with her time. As well as Michelle, very cheerful, cooperative, very kind, interacting with kids. And so, as you can see, we could talk for hours about our staff. We're very proud of what we do, where we work. And we have seventy-two staff members at our building that work in cohesively to really put forth efforts for kids. And they work incredibly hard, and I want to acknowledge that in every opportunity that I get. Seeing them in and out every day, working hard. It's a very challenging job. I want to acknowledge that they do a lot of work. And we work collectively at Sand Hill, and for one thing, and that's student success, so we, all of us, come together with that in mind. So, I appreciate your time. We may have gone a little bit too long, but I think it's important to spotlight our staff.
We ask questions?
You may.
Quick one. What is a trauma-informed teacher?
Oh, man. You want to?
One that had a bad time?
I saw, I knew you were going to ask that, too, right in your house. It is, it is somebody that understands how trauma affects the brain of a student or a child that goes through trauma, and how to help change those brainwaves and make new habits and behaviors and responses to their environment. So, she's very well-trained in that area and knows how to take and identify that a student's behavior may be caused by trauma and how to teach them new behaviors to be successful.
All right, thank you.
Well, it, actually, I'm really pleased because I don't know everybody that works in the school district anymore. I used to, but no longer. And I'm really happy to see a lot of our alumni coming back to work with us with kids. They are a well-oiled machine, and it's because of you guys.
I know after five, well, going on five years of my child ripping through your system like a wrecking ball, I know most of those people have been part of his life, and you, what I love about you guys is that you know your people, and you know them like their family. So, when you're explaining them, even the ones I don't know, but I know that you're, the things that you have up there for those people that I do know, which is a lot of them, that you're spot-on, and when you explain them and tell about their heart or what they love, you know, it's, it's touching. And it definitely shows in my child who has grown big-time as a, as a little brat, but he, he, he is, we are thankful at our home for you guys.
And thank you. And you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting.
We were going to say we want to honor our teachers tomorrow with a little breakfast celebration, so we want to get to bed.
Nice. That's very nice.
But one other comment I have. You left out pictures of you two, but that's okay because we got to see you in person.
We're here, yeah.
And also, you managed to. A couple of the kids said Mrs. Nygaard, and you know, so good job on that. But I just wanted to say a couple of things for myself. I have met a number of the teachers and stuff and have connections to them of one sort or another. But this morning, I ran into your old principal, Roger DeBritz, from elementary school. So, and of course, he's very enamored of you two, so there's a plug for you. And then, of course, Amber, I have the pleasure, had the pleasure and have the pleasure of having both your daughters as Builders Club presidents, and that says a lot about you. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
Give back. Thank you. So, now we are at Board Development and Linkage for Board Reorganization. So, I will call for nominations for the Office of Board President to serve our one-year term. One or more board members may be nominated, and to be eligible for election, the nomination must have a second. And then there would be a roll call vote of all board members. So, I'll call for nominations for the Board President.
Madam President, oop. Well, I'll go first. I would like to nominate yourself to be the Board President.
Second.
Thank you.
Third.
So, there's been a nomination and a second, and now we will have the roll call vote. I'm going to start, Art.
Art Whitman, I vote for Laura Bode.
John Campbell, Citizens for Bode.
Leanna Crotzer for Laura Bode.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know you were going to vote for yourself. No, I'm just kidding. Leanna Crotzer for Laura Bode, of course.
Okay, thank you. Now, oh, the gavel is supposed to come to me immediately right now, but since, I have it. So, we'll just move forward.
Laura, before we move forward and calling it an official installation, should we do the swearing-ins?
Would we do that, oh, of the board, of the?
Of the newly-elected three people?
That's not on here, okay.
I know, it didn't get on here.
Yeah, let's go ahead.
Okay. I would like to take this opportunity to officially swear in the three members of the board who were re-elected to the board this past November, and I'm just going to ask you to stand and raise your right hand where you are seated. And we'll do it all at once, and you can say your own names in the space, okay? I.
I.
Laura Bode.
John Campbell.
Art Whitman.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I am a citizen of the United States.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I am a citizen of the United States.
And state of Washington.
And state of Washington.
Washington.
That I am legally qualified.
That I am legally qualified.
To assume the office of North Mason School District Number 403 Director.
To assume the office of North Mason School District Number 403 Director.
I agree with Laura.
To assume the office of Director for North Mason School District 403.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the state of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution and the United States and the state of Washington.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties of this office to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties of this office to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we will move to election of Board Vice President. And I'd call for a nomination for the Board Vice President.
Madam President, I would like to nominate Craig Patty for Vice President.
We have a nomination for Craig Patty for Vice President, is there a second?
A second.
Okay. And now, we will conduct the roll call vote.
Craig Patty for Vice President. Leanna Krotzer for Craig Patty for Vice President.
Laura Bode for Craig Patty.
John Campbell for Craig.
Art Whitman for Craig Patty.
Okay. Craig Patty is elected Vice President, and that closes the Board Reorganization. So we're at Superintendent Update.
Yes, and we're gonna begin with our Budget Status Report, and Ashley's going to begin that with a very special recognition. So I will let her explain.
I've asked two of my staff members to come in today. They received some pretty awesome awards, so I want to present them to them here. So if I could have Tammy Byerly and Robin Inch join me. So, I think it was about a year ago, WASPO, which is the Washington Association of School Business Officials, had sent out an email saying, hey, if anybody's interested in some business certifications, you know, here's what you need to do in order to obtain these certifications. I sent the email out to my staff and I asked them, hey, if any of you guys are interested in trying to obtain professional certifications, let me know and we can get you on the right track. Both of them eagerly volunteered, and what, when did you guys complete them? Couple months ago this summer?
Yeah, mine was in May.
Yeah, so in May and then the summer.
In August, finished it.
So, Robin ended up completing and becoming a, let me make sure I don't botch this, a Certified School Business Specialist in the Accounts Payable Field. This required her taking college level school business accounting classes along with eleven badges in the Accounts Payable Field, which actually has seventy-nine content areas. And so she had to go through a number of hours of homework and classes and all of that kind of stuff in order to obtain that certification. This is what it looks like, so, Robin, there you go. And then, Tammy obtained the Certified School Business Specialist in Accounting. So, for just overall accounting for everything. And Tammy is our accounting supervisor and payroll supervisor in our office. So she obtained the overall accounting certification. And here's Tammy's certificate. One of the things I want to say about this, one of the things I'm very proud of, we have five staff members. To have two staff members obtain this level of a certification in an office our size is
Wow.
fairly hard to come by, so I just appreciate all that.
All right.
Can we shake your hands?
Thank you, congratulations. Congratulations, we're proud of you.
Good job.
Congratulations, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so.
Do you need a moment?
No, I'm good, it's been a rough week. Okay, so, starting with, let's start with the, let's start with the Budget Status Report. So, we're gonna be reporting on the financial information for the month of November. Starting with our other funds outside of General Fund, Capital Projects. At this point, we're down to one point eight six million dollars, that's to finish off the stadium and the softball field. At this point, I've already slated a transfer of funds into that, into the Capital Projects Funds for mid-January from the Debt Service Fund. So we're transferring a million dollars from Debt Service over to Capital Projects, and that's to pay for the roof at Sand Hill this summer, that the project's supposed to start the day after school gets out. And then, to pay for our early kindergarten portable. So, that fund, here at the end of January, you'll see that fund jump up about a million and Debt Service decrease by a million. Debt Service Fund is currently at three point eight million. I just certified our Debt Service Levy for the 2020 year at two point one million dollars. But we'll see a temporary drop in Debt Service once I do the transfer of the million. ASB is currently sitting at about four hundred and thirty-seven thousand. And the Transportation Vehicle Fund went up about twelve hundred dollars to thirty-one thousand. We're currently awaiting a payment for a large bus that was totaled, and we're currently in the process of ordering the new one. So we'll see a temporary jump up in the Transportation Vehicle Fund before we pay, make the payment on the new big bus.
I'm noticing that, I think I'm noticing that the ASB fund is more than it's been over the last several years.
Yes, it is.
Can I interpret that, so please correct me, because I might be having a misperception. Can I interpret that as our kids and our community are supporting us better in that respect? Because isn't that where a lot of that comes from? Kids doing fundraisers, people spending money or giving money for a lot of that?
Yeah, a lot of it is increased participation in fundraisers and such. And then, a big portion of it is, has been decreased ASB spending. So, they have, over the last few years, they're raising more and spending less. And so, the fund is pooling, so the fund continues to increase. There's certain clubs and athletic categories that are better at spending everything they earn, and other ones carry forward into future years. So, Sand Hill has actually seen a very large spike in fundraiser participation. And they're one of the buildings as to why we're seeing this increase. Here, just within the first few months of the school year, they've already raised twenty thousand. So.
What is the goal for their fundraising?
Technically, to earn whatever they can earn. They don't necessarily set a goal, they do set a budget based upon, you know, past history. So it's always a very conservative budget as far as what they feel like they're going to obtain. But, right now, where the fund is setting, is sitting currently, is well over where we had even budgeted. Now, of course, they still have multiple months to spend down that fund. But what we've seen so far in the beginning of the school year is some fairly high participation in the actual fundraising activities. So. Okay, so enrollment. Over the last two months, we've seen a tad bit of a dip in enrollment of about fifteen FTE. We, it's primarily at Belfer Elementary and at the high school, where we've seen the decrease. But there's a lot of things going on right now that could be impacting this. For example, the vaccination exclusion situation could impact December's count. So hopefully, come January, we'll see if this is actually a trend or an actual decline or whether or not it will go back up. So. January, though, is the month where they realign funding based upon enrollment. They normally take our October enrollment, which as you can see is our highest month. And they realign our funding based upon that. Then we'll get a back payment for any funds that we didn't receive through the months of September to December. Normally, though, that back payment ends up being spread out over the course of the rest of the year. But then our apportionment funding, January through August, will increase as well. So, we'll, I'm looking forward to see what our January apportionment brings. And I'll end up, I'll let you guys know what we've received as far as total dollars of additional funding once I get the report in January. Okay, so let's go to General Fund. The dashboard. Okay, did everybody have an opportunity to go through the dashboard? One of the things that we're seeing here are expenditures and our revenues. They're right about where we would expect for this time of year. Our local sources, our local revenue, is about four percent down from what was expected. That's due to lower property tax collection. So that's either individuals that are paying property taxes late, or unfortunately not paying the property taxes, which is where we see the dip there. But overall, for state sources, we're sitting at about two percent under what we would expect to have collected at this point. That's largely due to the fact that we just got some of our state grants and funding approved. They, it took them a few months at the state level. And so I just did our first claim on this yesterday morning, on these grants that had previously not been approved. So we should see that gap right there close after I collect apportionment at the end of the month. For our expenditures. Our expenditures are trending right where we had expected. Our total expenditures were about half a percent off. But our salaries and benefits, our actual year to date versus where we have trended historically, were about two percent lower. And that was due to some strategic decisions made during the summer regarding staffing going into this year just to ensure that we can help rebuild our fund balance. And our basic education year to date, we're currently sitting at about just over like one point two percent over where we had expected. One of the things that I was excited to see with our last apportionment payment is we received a State Forest revenue. We received about forty thousand in the General Fund and about thirty-four thousand in the Debt Service Fund. Unfortunately, it wasn't a high enough amount to make the sheet yet, but I just wanted to point it out. I wouldn't expect to see too many State Forest payments, though, over the winter. Not a lot of trees are being logged during those months. But, the fact that we've already received about half of what we received over the entire year last year leads me to believe that we should see more State Forest revenue this year than we had in previous years. Nice. So, our fund balance. It looks wonky right now because of a trifecta of situations. The solid blue line right there is currently where we're at and where we're trending. Like I said previously, the goal is to get us up to the point where we have a two point eight million dollar fund balance by the end of August. But with the fact that almost twenty-five percent of our revenues won't be coming in until July or August, we're gonna see that line stay low until the summer, at which point it's gonna spike. We'll receive a property tax collection in April as well, that's where you see that projected spike there towards the end of that graph. And then, the very, the first month following a property tax collection month, the state only gives us five percent of our revenues. And that's why you start to see it decline again, because then we have to pull from fund balance to pay bills and make payroll. But, the goal is to get it back up there to two point eight million by the end of the school year once we can get the rest of the money from the state. Okay, so, our overall financial summary, this goes into a little bit more details as to where we are as far as percent of budget in each one of these areas for both revenues and expenditures. One of the big pieces that I wanted to point out under the local tax, so this would be local property tax collections or levy, that very top line under revenues. If you look in the chart on the right-hand side, so that chart right there that the cursor's on is last year's. The chart right next to it, that one, is this year's. Last year, at this time, we had collected forty-seven point six four percent of our levy. We've only collected thirty-four percent this year. That's a very large decrease from one year to the next. I was still rolled back for our October collection. And so, we're just, we're bringing in less local dollars at this point. And unfortunately, we're also bringing in less state dollars because of the change, which is causing this trifecta issue with fund balance. Do you guys have any other questions specific to any item on there?
Well, will we be collecting the local levy tax to bring it up to what the budgeted amount was? Or not?
Hopefully. It's honestly dependent on, at this point, a big chunk of this is unpaid property taxes. So, that is sort of out of our control. And the Magic Eight Ball is really bad at telling me whether or not it will work out. I'm hopeful that it will, yeah. We, this year, as far as when the property taxes came in, it came in unlike any other year. We ended up with a very, very short collection during the month of October, which is normally our highest collection month. And we received more than I would have expected in November, but not enough to get us to the point of where we had expected to be. So, I'm waiting to see where we're at this month to see if we have a higher collection as well, because then it truly was just late property taxes. Some of it could have been appealed, property evaluations.
There will be a lot of that.
Yep, and so that will impact it as well. So, it's a multitude of factors that are at play right now. But, we're being conservative on our spending right now to ensure that if we don't collect that thirteen percent gap, that it doesn't put us in a bad situation by the end of the year. So, yep. Any other questions, comments?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just know that we appreciate all that you do.
Thank you.
And we appreciate all your sweat.
Yeah.
And your stress, and you can go.
Okay, thanks.
Good night.
We'll see you guys later at five.
Thank you.
Teaching and learning update.
Yeah, so a couple of special things I want to do. One of the first things is I want to acknowledge again, and you know that Art doesn't like to get publicly acknowledged. However, he was recognized at the Washington State School Directors Association Conference in November for his fifteen years of board service. And I just wanted to bring that out publicly again and say, thank you, Art, and we're glad you're still serving. And I'll pass you your certificate.
He's not gonna walk through here or shake his hand?
He'll let you shake his hands later.
Yeah.
The second thing I wanted, other things I want to let you know about and as far as recognition, I think it's really important to share with the board that North Mason School District is one of only two school districts in the state, along with Medical Lake School District on the east side, that is being recognized as a national demonstration school for the work that we're doing with multi-tiered systems of support because we are integrating deliberately our mental health, community, school, and family partnerships to get the work done for kids. And I'm really proud of our staff for that work. And, you know, we're just getting started and we're deep enough into it that we can see all the things we haven't done and we need to do. And we're, it's a little scary and discouraging, but they're doing amazing work. And I'm really proud that they've been recognized in this way, so I wanted to bring you to that attention.
What was the title of that again?
Multi-tiered Systems of Support. And what the, actually, the national recognition mission is called for having an interconnected systems framework, which is more gobbledygook.
Interconnected Systems Framework, I can get that.
Yeah.
So maybe our January article, Art, could mention that as well, since you're the next one on.
Great.
And get the information from down there. Thank you.
So that's very exciting. Also, we have been recognized at the state level. We were asked to apply to participate in an inclusionary practices work group. And then, we were selected after we asked. So, we have a team from this school district that will meet with teams from a number of other school districts to look at better including kids with special needs in the general ed curriculum throughout the day and how to build systems to do that, and set rules and expectations for ourselves and for dis- set rules and expectations for ourselves and for districts around the state. And so, we're also very proud of being recognized and, and asked to participate in that work as a district.
Excellent.
Yes.
I'm excited about that.
That's very exciting. And then, I wanted to remind you, our early entrance, another thing that we're trying to do to meet the needs of the whole child, our early entrance kindergarten is opening its doors for the first time in January.
All right.
And because, you know, sometimes it's difficult to work with all of the different people you have to work with in the permitting process. The portable that Ashley referenced won't be fully installed and ready to go, but we're not letting that hold us up. Joan and her team have done some amazing work refitting the museum classroom space down at Thaler, so that we can start the early entrance kindergarten in the museum and then move them into their brand-new portable classroom building when it's ready to go. So, we're very excited about that.
So, they'll be trucking down the path?
They'll be trucking down the path for the first couple of weeks of school.
Okay.
Very excited.
Good, what a, what a treat.
Yeah.
You know, you just get to walk down there, and that's fun.
Yeah. So, those, those are things I definitely wanted to highlight with you and let you know about. Those are very exciting. Next up is Capital Projects, and they are just doing the finishing pieces of work on our stadium seating, making sure all the seats are in. You know, some people looked at it and saw, "We're going to have to sit on cold metal under that cover," but no, there are, is, blue plastic seats that are going on over the, the metal, so those are getting put in. The scoreboard is getting installed. We expect those things to be done in the next couple of weeks. We have gone out, or are in the process of going out to get bids for doing some paperwork first, but we'll be going out very, very soon for bids for the completion of the softball venue, and we expect to have most of it completed in time for play this season. There, there might be some work that needs, remains to be done on the outfield and reseating and regrowing that, that will have to happen after the season, so we don't have the girls trying to play on mud. But, but that's really exciting. So, those are some great things that are going on with Capital Projects.
Nice, I think it's really impressive. I love wa, driving by there and seeing something happening all the time. A graduate from North Mason High School, whose last name is Griffin, and I can't remember his first name, but he's Jody Griff, Jody Grip. His, her son stopped me in QFC and commented on the stadium and had, he's a great big guy now, and he graduated from the U-Dub with a, he's an attorney. Do you know him? Oh, okay, well, anyway, he just said that he thought it was pretty cool that we had done all of that work, and he's going to move back into this community and maybe set up a practice here.
All right.
So, that's pretty awesome.
Very cool.
So, that, we're now at, is that all you have?
Mm-hmm.
We're at Community Linkage Planning and Message of the Month. So, we have a list of community meetings there and events, but I would encourage you to take advantage of any, any time that you run into anybody, for whatever reason, to be sure to talk about the good things that are going on in the school district and ask if they have any questions, because they do, and it's an opportunity. Our upcoming board letter columnist will be Arts up for January, and then Craig for February, and John for March. But, you already have one topic that you can talk about.
Yeah, although, I wanted to bring up, I think it was actually when we were at the...
Conference?
Yeah.
Oh, at the...
The EST 113 thing.
Yeah.
We were coming up with a topic having to do with, now, I forgot. Do you remember?
No, but I might have notes.
You, you have notes?
Yeah.
Okay, and it sounded like, it seemed like it was quite appropriate, but I can't remember what that topic was. But, it was along the theme of, in some ways, it's educating our community about some of the things that they're really not aware of. Do you remember, John?
No, but I remember it was a good idea.
Yeah, thank you. Do you recall, Leanne?
Say that again, that it was...
It was something that, that came up for all the districts there, as of ways to communicate with the, the community about some things that they're really not...
About our levies and our bond?
Probably having to do with that.
I think it was, it was about educating why the, every, like, if we're going to put out a levy, then this is why we're going to do it, and putting it, like, in their face, so that they're not...
And keeping it local and really highlighting what's happening good for kids here, rather than comparing with other districts or talking about, all right, you know, our, how we feel about how well we're funded by the state or not, but, but really just keeping the focus on, here's what we're doing for kids and why it's important. And so, that, any of these things we're talking about, the early entrance kindergarten, the multi-tiered systems work, all of this work is something that isn't funded by OSPI or the state budget, and would be really helpful to make sure the district knows, or the people in the district know more about, so they know why we're asking to move out, yes.
And it really, I think also, part of that is that it, we should add into the education for them is that it does benefit them, even people without kids, there are benefits, you know, the benefits for doing these things. So, I think part of that, that's what I hear a lot, is, "I don't even have kids, why would I want to, you know, why would I want to pass that?" And it's like, "Oh, you know, give me an hour, you know, like, I'll sit with you," but I think getting that out there would be...
Right, I remember a particular piece was what you brought up that somewhat different from before is now that levy and other voted funds are staying more local than they have been in the past.
Yes.
And that would be a very important message to send out.
I think everybody agreed, too, is letting people know what levies mean and bonds mean, because even, I, I mean, it was new to me when it would, they put it out in crayon saying levy is for learning and bonds are for, are for building, and that really just, that's easy, you know, because people go, "Well, what, why do you need a bond? You just got a levy." You know, and it's like, "Well, that's because of this, you know, because we're building this now." So, kind of breaking that apart for them was...
So, would you be available? I mean, there's the school break coming up, and I'm not quite sure when I need to turn this thing in. Mid, oh, that gives me time, so I'd like to sit down with you and...
Sure.
...get a lot of information before I start writing anything.
Okay.
Would early January work for that?
That'd be great.
Okay, thanks.
Was that also connected to the idea when we're talking to legislators and others that we need local examples and things that are unique or distinct about our district? I remember that coming up.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, okay.
All right, if we're finished with that?
Thanks.
Thank you.
We're on the Assurance of Organizational Performance and Policy Review section, and this month, we have ER-5 Budget Execution, and I would entertain a motion to find the superintendent's performance to comply with ER-05 Budget Execution.
Madam Chairman, I move that we find the superintendent's performance to comply with ER-5 Budget Execution.
Discussion.
I have none. I'm appreciative of all the stuff that we've been going through and how it seems to be turning out, and knowing the ups and the downs that we all are going through with that. I don't feel like anything's being hidden.
It's definitely come a long way in clarity, just in my five years, I think five years, that in the beginning, it was a little bit tough to understand some of the things, but your work, and Ashley stands up there and blows us all away, and then we're, "Any questions?" And we're just, never, you know, so, well, a few, but, yeah, great job.
Thank you.
Well, and I do, I want to note, too, that you and the finance director have stayed within the parameters of budget execution that we approved and asked you to keep to. So, I appreciate that, and it's not an easy year to do that, and I think Ashley's doing an excellent job, and it might be taking its toll. We need to give her some time off.
Yes, we need to force her to take some time off.
Yes. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, approved. Now, we're on to ER-8 Communication and Counsel to the Board, and I would entertain a motion to find the superintendent's performance to comply with ER-8 Communication and Counsel to the Board.
Madam Chairman, I move that we find the superintendent's execution of ER-8 Communication and Counsel to the Board. We accept her recommendation for that, and we vote yes.
Okay, we have a motion to, I'll restate that if you don't mind.
Go right ahead.
Because I'm not sure.
Oh, I thought the ER, we find her, we find the superintendent in compliance with ER-8.
Compliant with.
Compliant with.
All right, is there any discussion? Good job on communication. I mean, we've really expanded the communication to so many different levels and in so many different forms that we, I personally feel like there's no way in the world that I shouldn't know what's happening and what's going on, and I believe that that would be the same thing that the community could say now, because we really are sending that information out in many different forms and formats, and I appreciate having a student board member here, so she can go back and talk to her fellow students about what happens here and how we, how we make things go. So, any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, ER-8 is approved. So, the, our policy review, we looked at academic standards and practices last month, and it seems so long ago, but do we have anything else that we'd like to add to ER-10 Academic Standards and Practices? Any other comments? Okay, we'll move on to the adjournment. Good of the order, the board and the superintendent. Let's start with the superintendent. Anything you'd like to...
Well, you know, I, I got to share with you some of the exciting new things that are happening, and you've all mentioned so many of the things happening with our students, there's so many activities right now, and just want to encourage you to keep attending those. We'll have a lot as we come back from the break, and we have a couple of big sporting events happening over the break, so I don't have those dates on the top of my head, but I would suggest you check the calendar. We're hosting both a basketball event as well as a wrestling tournament, so those would be really great opportunities to watch some of our kids do some things at which they excel, and just happy holidays.
Yes, okay. Aleah, do you have anything?
I don't think so. I think it's really cool hearing about all this stuff, though, and I just want to thank you guys again for letting me have this opportunity.
Oh, we're happy to have you. Thank you. Art?
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
I have one thing to add. I failed to mention in our first go-around. As you so well mentioned, we need to recommend, we need to go out as ambassadors to the community in various capacities. I try to recognize, have us recognized with appropriate dignity, and I was at the Chamber of Commerce Worst Christmas Outfit Contest. I came in second.
Didn't even have to try.
And my picture, all, by the way, is in the paper.
Oh, okay.
And you can see the outfit, and I think you'll see, I deserved at least second.
Okay.
I wonder if I have anything... I don't have much for the outgoing, but if anybody is taking the North Shore out towards Tahuya, just be aware that it, that there's flooding and they may be closing the road. So, it's going to be an interesting ride to Sand Hill, up and around, and then back down the other side to get to my Mission Creek, so, anybody else? That's pretty much what I got.
All right, I'd like to thank Don LaPere for coming to the meeting. It's always good to see your face. Do you have something?
I actually have courage to see two of my former patients teaching at Sand Hill, Lauren and Amy. I've known them since they were in the motions. And I'm, I'm used, when Art was first decided to go on the board, I mean, one of our kids paying into social security rather than sucking their money out, so there is an ulterior motive for all of us, for our kids to get a good education, so that there is money in that system when we're ready to retire. I mean, it's, there is...
Good point.
There, you know, it's, it's for everybody's benefit.
Yep, yep, thank you. So, Director Whitman will process the board's self-assessment of the meeting.
And I just went through the form, and so, to be very brief about it, on the, under the general meeting behavior thing, which does the agenda planning, do we follow it? Are we prepared for it? Did it proceed without interruptions? We had a couple of funny changes, but that, we do several times have changed, changed the agenda around. Our deliberation, our participation, do we, are we listening attentively, that sort of thing. I put ourselves satisfactory for all those metrics. Under the governance principles review, there's 10 of them. I put yes on nine of them, and I put not applicable on, in writing additional policies, because we didn't do that today.
Okay.
So, overall, we have a satisfactory conclusion.
Thank you.
And you get to have that.
Okay, our next board meeting date is January 16th at 6:30 right here, and meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Does anybody know where...